I received a letter about the, probably my third or fourth letter, about speeding down the hill on Cap Ave, coming down towards Bay. There are some really concerned neighbors. They lost a dog this week. Not Buddy, a different dog. Because of cars coming down the hill. And of course, they estimate they're coming down at 40 and 50 miles an hour. That probably means they're coming down at 30 or 40. But still, we need to pay attention to that because that is next to Park Avenue, the speediest street we have. And we need to take a look at that. Lastly, the Begonia Festival first and last gala dinner will take place this Saturday night at the Coconut Grove. They still have tickets available, I believe. Starts at 6:00 PM. The tickets are only $20 for full dinner. Because they're using up all their extra money to give Capitola a good time. So come on down. Yours truly will be the emcee. And we'll see how it goes.
Great, Kristen.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the Capitola Public Safety and Community Service Foundation had their 12th Annual Golf Tournament fundraiser on Friday of last week. It was a fantastic event, and thank you for everyone who participated.
Thank you very much. We got a letter, I thought everybody had gotten it, so I didn't pass it around. But we got a letter from an anonymous resident who did sign some sort of a signature with lots of just illegal signs and, you know, boards and things like that. So I'll just pass that around if you want to see these. They're, were, just one of those continual things that we have in town where people try to put out signs that, you know, that they're not allowed to have and whatever. So I just wanted to pass-
And the world stops spinning.
Pass this around of what we got, so you'll be aware of that. I got, we got an announcement for an open house for an aquatic veterinary service. Santa Cruz Coi and Aquarium Open House, Saturday, October 14th, from 9:00 to 6:00. 4061 B SoCal Drive in SoCal. It's not in Capitola, but the Capitola Chamber is also the SoCal Chamber. So they do a lot of promotion for all of our businesses. So that's kind of an interesting one. October 7th through 15th is a new holiday that was declared by the state legislature. And it is California Water Professionals Appreciation Week. So Ron Graves and I took breakfast things down to the sanitation district yesterday for the crew to have a little breakfast, as we did to our Public Works crew, to thank them for their good work flushing the lines and taking care of the, repairing the lines and putting in new lines and so forth. And they were just tickled. They were really tickled. So, so we did that. The AIDS Life Cycle Annual Seven-Day Bike Ride from San Francisco to Los Angeles is coming through our area on Sunday, June 3rd through Saturday, June 9th. And they're going to be contacting all the communities to let them know of what's going on there. So I'll just pass that on. There is a series of meetings for, for local elected officials and leaders and community members to come and learn about the Mid-County Groundwater Basin activities. And it's a little technical, but it's very, very important. And I attended the workshop on October 5th. That was at the Simkins Swim Center. And it was, they're having a series of four meetings to explain what this is and what they're doing and what they're looking at. So anybody interested in the future of water in this county, I encourage you to go to the meetings. They're very informative and very, very nice, very interesting. So the next one is going to be on October 25th, from 7:00 to 9:00. And the next one is November 13th, from 7:00 to 9:00, Orientation Workshop Number Three. And then Orientation Workshop Number Four is going to be on December 7th, from 7:00 to 9:00. So this is state mandated to look at our groundwater situation and come up with some solutions. So it's extremely, extremely important. And if anyone would like to, to go and follow it, it's, it's very, very interesting. The, we got an invitation to go to the Central Coast Center for Independent Living in Monterey. They're working on assisting local veterans in housing. And so far, they have housed, succeeded in housing 35 veterans within the past year in the Salinas area community. So they're having a fundraiser and an event down, down in Salinas to support that. So that's, that's good work. And also, if you're interested in, in water and what's going on here, the SoCal Creek Water District meetings are televised. You can come down here live, or you can stay at home in a comfortable chair and watch it. But they're very interesting, and if you're interested in what's, what's going on in that field, I encourage you to, to follow it. Next item, treasure announcements, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We held a financial advisory committee meeting this last week, and we gave our finance director, Jim Maulberg, some reaction items. If any of them come to fruition, it might result in a change or request a change to our financial investment and policy. We looked into, gave him the action items, look into PERS liability, possibly prepaying that more than required, looking into sweep accounts, and finally pursuing, continuing to pursue more aggressive investment policies, which it turns out, we would, we would be unique in terms of government agencies doing something like that. But nevertheless, we haven't let go of that yet. And we've got some nibbles from various fund managers who say, yeah, this is not a hard thing. So if anything comes of any of those action items, we'll hopefully get something on the agenda item and present it to you.
Thank you. Any other staff announcements?
First, just wanted to let the council know that we plan to dive the wharf next week, which is part of the engineering contract that we authorized at the last council meeting to inspect the pilings and begin the process for design of the wharf. Second announcement I have, as I mentioned at the end of the last meeting, we will be putting on a Capitola Leadership Academy this winter. Applications are available on our website for anyone who's interested in engaging with the city or otherwise participating in public activities within the City of Capitola. It's an excellent opportunity to learn a little bit about the city and our associated and affiliated agencies.
Thank you. Mr. Grunno. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce our new assistant planner, Matt Orbach. Matt was selected from a very competitive pool of candidates. We had over 80 applicants for the position. We interviewed about 10 of them, and Matt clearly rose above the field, and we're really excited to have him on board. Matt's a Santa Cruz native. He was born in Dominican Hospital, went to UCSE to get a bachelor's degree, and has a master's in planning from Cal Poly. Matt most recently worked at San Juan Batista, where he was a community development director of a two-person department. And prior to that, he also worked as an assistant planner for the SoCal Creek Water District. So we're excited to have Matt, and I'd ask you to welcome him on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor Harland, and other council members. I've actually also worked for SoCal Creek Water District, which is why I've met Mayor Harland, Councilmember Bertrand, and City Manager Goldstein as well. So look forward to meeting the rest of you and tackling some interesting planning challenges that are far different from the ones in San Juan Batista.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're really happy to have you. Great.
So I think I recall when you were at the SoCal, you were dealing a lot with outreach also? That was one of your responsibilities?
Yeah, I was actually a public outreach specialist for SoCal Creek Water District. But Melanie Schumacher knew that I had the planning background, so that's why I was also working with the Santa Cruz Mid-County Groundwater Agency, which you were just announcing things about earlier. And I'm still in touch with them. I've had lunch recently with Laura Brown and Darcy Pruitt, and, and so I still keep tabs on everything there as well.
Great.
Great. Thank you. Great. Wonderful. Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you. And I'm also a new Capitola resident too, by the way. My wife and I and 16-month-old baby girl just bought a condo on 38th in April.
Wonderful.
We're on the border, but we're in Capitola. But to get mail, we have to list Santa Cruz.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other staff announcements or staff comments? Then we'll go on to the consent calendar, and I have a quick question on G, and Ed wants to, a quick question on A.
Well, we get to the general one.
Oh, okay.
But I'd like to pull G if you just, if we can do that.
Okay, yeah, we'll pull G.
Okay.
Any others, anyone would like to pull? Any others that the audience members would like to pull for separate discussion, consent calendar or item, minor items that we take in one motion?
I'll move consent. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item G, my question is-
Would you like to have a brief staff report on item G?
Yes, please. Staff report, please.
Okay, I think Steve can give that to us here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Senate Bill 1 was adopted last spring, and the guidelines were finally published on the rules we have to meet to obtain the funding. It does include an allocation directly to the city. And for this year, in this year's budget, we allocate $58,000, which we put in the gas tax. We really didn't know how we were going to, what, what the guidelines were going to be from the state when we adopted the budget, so we put it in the gas tax. At this point, they want us to put it toward a capital improvement project. We're required to file a report with them by Monday of next week with a resolution showing what project the money's going to go to. Our recommendation is we adopt the resolution included and put it toward the green bike lane project, which will then free up money that we had, general fund money in there for other capital improvement projects.
Other questions?
I had a question, yeah. That's great that we got the money from that. My concern was that, when I read the staff report, it said it frees up $22,000 that was going to go back into road surfacing budget. And my concern was since we did take about, I believe, $200,000 out of the general fund, wouldn't we be able to just credit that $22,000 back to the general fund?
Yes, we can. There's actually another 30, because we're putting, the project's fully funded, we're putting in 58. 22 actually came out of the slurry when we funded it. So we're going to put 22 back in the slurry, and then there are 36 going back to the general fund.
Okay.
But it can go wherever.
Well, there was, there was a cent amount that we authorized for slurry, and I don't want to take away from that. But if we, if we were able to take the entire 58 that was refunded and put that back in the general fund, I would propose to do that, rather than increase the slurry budget.
That would be fine.
My question is, what is the Highway 1 Enhanced Bike Lane Project? They always have fancy names. What is it really?
That's the green bike lane project.
The green paint on the ground. The green paint on the ground is now the Highway 1 Enhanced Bike Lane Project.
Yes, yes.
People get paid too much money for thinking about these names.
Caltrans like that name.
So it's, so my question was, the project's done?
Project, it's almost.
Almost.
99% done, yes.
In Capitola?
In Capitola.
Oh, okay. Where else do they have to do it?
No, they have some legends to put down.
Green and then white and then the stripings.
Yeah. So it is essentially done, and we'll quickly allocate the SB 1 money to it and make the state happy.
And any other questions about that?
I'll move the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll go to the general government items. Item A is Capitola Avenue railing, public art, and we have a corrected, slightly corrected agreement that is addition.
Yes, that, that's correct. There was a section of the original contract.
Before you start, I'm going to need to recuse myself from this item, so I just would like a moment to explain why I'm doing that.
Certainly.
Just, this item is, comes under the context of what is a possible conflict of interest for city councilperson. And in 1974, the voters enacted the Political Reform Act, adopting that act that voters recognize that conflict of interest in governmental decision-making by officials is a significant danger. In order to prevent conflict of interest, public officials should, they list three items that public officials should scrutinize. And the one that comes into play here is one that says, consider whether the actions affect on the official's financial interest is reasonably foreseeable and material. And in this case, I want to address, and the item says, what a material financial effect is assumed if. And this is because I rent the property directly above Belaroma Restaurant. And they list five options that will affect how you have to look at this, whether you need to recuse yourself. And of the five items, one is a change of the date of the lease, two is an increase and decrease of potential real value of the property, three is an increase or decrease of the rental value of the property, an official right has to lease it, four is the change of the official's actual legally allowable use of the property, and five is the impact of the official's use and enjoyment of this property. Now, because this is an art project, which I'm assuming that this board will probably make a decision to enhance that metal rail that exists there, it will probably impact the use and enjoyment of said councilman that walks down the stairs. So I'm going to recuse myself based on that, item five, and also, I don't know whether it could increase or decrease the rent, but it may, so.
Will it increase your enjoyment or decrease it?
I don't know, but it, either one-
I'm just trying to get an idea.
It could do either. So based on those reasons, I just want the public to be aware that, that, you know, seeing these guidelines, I'm going to not vote on this item. I'll be waiting outside, and I would appreciate it when you're done, if you could come and get me, and let me return to the business. Thank you.
Let's vote before he gets out of the room.
Okay. Okay, may we have a staff report, please?
Yes, well, I wanted, the contract included a clause regarding more recent language for public art, and that, that was a significant change on the, the contract that was recommended by the city attorney's office. So, so good evening, and mayor, council members. We're here to talk about the proposed Capitola railing project, which is, as Councilman Robodorf said, in front of Belaroma and the 300 block of Capitola Avenue. I want to kind of go back to discuss what the public art program is. It was established in 2004, and it basically is funded through large commercial and public projects. The commercial developments have the opportunity to contribute at least 2% of the valuation of the project for art on location, or they can contribute 1% to the public art fund. As of this time, every commercial development has chosen the latter rather than putting art on. So that means that the current public art fund balance is about $250,000. In 2017, 2018, we budgeted $75,000. The public art funds can only be used for public art. They are in a special balance sheet, it doesn't get intermingled. So that's why the Art and Culture Commission is tasked to recommend public art projects in the City of Capitola. Some of the past ones that you remember are the Wharf Road murals, the Otter down at the, the Wharf, down at the Esplanade Park, and the tiles. Those have been other, other uses of these funds historically. The proposed railing is, as we said, is on the east side, the even block of Capitola Avenue. The existing safety guardrail, basically a galvanized pipe rail, was installed in 2013 due to safety concerns. The Art and Culture Commission agreed that that would be a really nice enhancement for a public art project, to not only replace the existing railing, but to extend it along the slopes, to add handrails to that section. Currently, it's, the guardrail's about 38 feet long. The entire project, including handrails, is about 90 feet long. We determined the research that about $30,000 was an appropriate budget for this amount of work, based on some other, other projects. The commission nominated a selection committee, which included commissioners as well as local residents in the, in the general area that would have impact. And they, they participated significantly in the process. They issued a call to artists through an online system, so we got responses from over 20 artists throughout the western United States. They reviewed those, and based on the qualifications and past work, the selection committee recommended two of the artists to come make full proposals to the Art and Cultural Commission. After those proposals, the Art and Culture Commission voted unanimously with one abstention due to location, selected the proposal from Lois and Ernest Rich of Sculptural Accents. I want to give some examples of some of the things that caused, helped them be selected. This is, this is kind of a few pictures of their previous work. As you can see, they've, they've done quite a bit in the, the, you know, railing and other, I think the term they use, and I use is, well, functional art. You know, art that serves a purpose as well as being art. These are some railings, as you can see, they've used some of the ocean motifs, which is one of, one of the things. And this, this is actually, the, they brought a full, kind of, full-size piece of their proposal, not specifically what's going to end up there, but as a concept. And it's a, it really helped sway the, the Art and Culture Commission, they were very impressed.
Yeah, I was wondering whether that was photoshopped when I saw it, and I, or whether they brought something out.
They brought something out.
That's good.
Yes, yes. It was very, very impressive, very impressive. So as we mentioned, the proposed railing is ocean-themed. You know, based on our location, that was one of the directions that the, the call to artists had. It will meet all required safety and ADA requirements. The railing will be fabricated in sections, so that way, if, if future capital improvement projects need to make changes to that area, it can be adjusted. That was one of the design criterias, because we do know that, that down the road, there may be some work done in that area. And so now what I'd like to do is, I'd like to bring up the artists, Ernest, Ernest and Lois Rich of Sculptural Accents, to kind of give a little more detail, and after the presentation, we'd love to take some questions.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and council members. This is Lois, I'm Ernie.
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
We've enjoyed this process of, we saw this pop up on the cafe, which you apply to these things, and we said, ooh, Capitola, because we come down here a lot anyway, so we thought it was a great place to, to work. So we were kind of excited to be selected. We specialize in functional art, more or less, sculptural and not just functional, but that's our primary. It's fun fitting within the parameters of code requirements, and Larry has helped us figure out what your specific needs are. You know, I think we've come up with a pretty doable plan that's, could be modified at some time in the future, if you need to change it without affecting the overall design, which is what we're mostly bringing to it. If you do, just jump right in. If you have any specific questions, just go right ahead.
Would you like to go to the next slide? We can go through and show, sorry.
Yeah. Now, this was the original concept, based off the call. So it carries, it's hard to see on this, because it was, it was a large slide, but an ongoing Monterey Bay theme. We're going to try to work in little groups of Otter. And this, when I say this, it's going to be abstract in nature, not anatomical, but some things we'll get more of, some we'll get less. It depends on how it works in the piece when we start actually fabricating and doing the design work. So these things always morph a little bit to get the best design. So it's kind of made to be playful. Anything that will be on the outside, because where you have it, there's no access to the outside rail, so that'll allow us to do a little bit of movement and give it a little depth, without being any danger to the pedestrian traffic or wheelchair access. That, and like Larry said, now, we've gone to three, they're going to be joined, but there'll still be three separate sections, because the ADA ramps have specific requirements for returns, pass-through wheelchair boundaries and whatnot. And the top part is just a basic 42-inch, which gives us a larger palette to work with the design in. So each post is kind of designed to be a kelp, a bull kelp kind of theme, so, you know, that's the, and like I say, it does morph when you get there, and so it's going to fall within the, the idea of that.
Well, we may be able to, just in the water movement, sometimes you can create like a whale tail. It's not a-
Can you speak in the microphone? Thanks.
It's not a particularly, to a whale tail, but the water movement will suggest it, and it's sort of like, people can walk by and, did I see that right? And it's sort of just suggest, it's not to be the entire animal by any means, but, so it'll be a lot of fun for people walking down the sidewalk.
Are there any questions? Any more slides, Larry? More pictures?
No, that's, that's the last of the pictures.
Great. Any comments about it?
Just a quick question for Larry. Was there any thought of continuing this on Capitola Road down the hill?
At this point, no. It was just looked at, this, this location at this point was-
Thanks for that idea, though. We'll take it to the Art and Cultural Commission. That's a great idea. We have a couple of hundred feet of railing there, actually.
So we're willing to take any questions you might have at this time.
I think we're, I think we're good right now. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming tonight, and we appreciate you submitting it, and congratulations for winning, and we look forward to this wonderful project.
Oh, we do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Where do, where are you from?
Well, we live in Berkeley. Been there eight years, but North Carolina's coming through a little bit.
Little bit, little bit, yeah, yeah. John, do you have a question or a comment?
No, I do not.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, any other comments of that? We, we have a recommendation to approve the railing fund for $30,000. Anyone in the public like to address us on this issue? Then we'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, I'll move the staff recommendation. I want to let you know that these pictures do not do this particular sample justice. It completely wowed the Art and Cultural Commission. There was no doubt in our mind, this is what needed to go there.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
I think I need a second.
All second. Sorry, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. It's a very, very exciting project.
Do we want Ed to come back? Do we want Ed to come back? No, I'm saying, do we want to call him in?
Yeah, he's listening, so he can come when he wants.
Oh, there he is.
I was counting on him, honestly. My first recusal, I didn't look to.
Item number B is the Coastal Climate Change Vulnerability Report. Mr. Bruno.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The Coastal Climate Change Vulnerability Report that's before you this evening was funded through a $150,000 grant from the California Coastal Conservancy that was awarded to Monterey County. Along with Monterey County, the County of Santa Cruz, City of Capitola, Moss Landing Marine Labs, and several nonprofit groups partnered in the preparation of this regional study. This is, this represents the latest city effort to better understand and address the effects of climate change. Beginning in 2010, the city, with Ambag, prepared a baseline greenhouse gas inventory. We subsequently prepared a sea level rise assessment for Capitola that was used to develop our local hazard mitigation plan. And then in 2013, we prepared an energy action strategy, and in 2015, you adopted the city's first climate action plan. And so this study is just the latest, latest and greatest document for information related to climate change and sea level rise. This study's purpose and intention is to help the city identify appropriate sea level rise adaptation measures in the future. It evaluates the effects of sea level rise on critical coastal infrastructure and public and private improvements over three time horizons, in 2030, 2060, and 2100. The report also assesses those impacts from different types of coastal hazards, including rising tides, storm flooding, river flooding, and erosion, all which are expected to intensify with rising sea levels. The study also estimates the economic value of vulnerable infrastructure and improvements, and then identifies potential adaptation strategies that the city may consider down the road. Tonight, I have with us Ross Clark, who's the Program Director for the Moss Landing Marine Labs and the Central Coast Wetlands Group. He was the project manager for this study, and he's going to share with us the study results, findings, and conclusions. And so with that, I will turn it over to Ross.
Welcome, Ross. We're so happy that you're here.
Thank you very much.
It's quite a big topic we're tackling tonight.
It is, and I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news. What I mean to be is help in identifying future risks and help work with the city to identify strategic ways to minimize those risks.
And as Mike has said, we're one of the many places that's ground zero.
Yes, that's right. So I'm going to briefly review what's in the report, and I encourage you to look through it. Lots of great maps and information, and summarized very concisely at the beginning. We did use state guidelines in the completion of this report by using the three timelines that Rich outlined, and projected possible sea level rise elevations for those three time horizons that are seen here. We then used some sea level rise coastal climate change vulnerability models that have been developed by the California Coastal Conservancy and Phil Williams and Associates. And our, we used those model layers, which you can see in blue, and overlaid those with city assets to understand what the combined future effects are of these projected risks. And we identify, identify those layers for, by each of the three time horizons, which you can see in different colors of blue here. We also did the same procedure for Moss Landing community area, as well as the entire county of Santa Cruz. And we're in the process of doing the same process for the city of Santa Cruz as well. We also disassociated the combined hazards within those base layers to help staff and decision-makers better identify what the underlying processes that lead to these risks are. And so we, as Rich mentioned, we looked at rising tides. We looked at coastal storm flooding, which is no new story for Capitola, but we were able to quantify over time possible increases in that risk. We looked at river flooding associated with an increase in sea level, and this was a special study that was added through the grant specifically for Capitola, looking at the Soquel Creek, and looking at the combined effects of changes in rainfall predicted for the future and changes in ocean levels. We also evaluated erosion potential along the coast and some of the properties and infrastructure that are vulnerable to those projected future erosion levels, with and without current armoring taken into account. Some of our findings were that different types of infrastructure are vulnerable to different hazards at different times, and that's why the analysis, we feel, is really important to help staff understand where the risks are at different time horizons, and what are some of the adaptation strategies that can be systematically implemented to help minimize those future risks. We also identified a number of key assets within the city that are vulnerable to each of these individual hazards, the time horizon, when those are predicted to be within the hazard zones for each of those hazards, and which hazard is identified as being, causing that risk to that infrastructure. That type of information will help the city and property owners better identify how to adapt to these future hazards. As Rich mentioned, we also tried to do, estimate the cumulative cost or value of the properties and infrastructure that are within these different hazard zones for each of the different time horizons, with and without coastal armoring, and put that into a perspective of costs for adaptation, costs for expanded or improved seawalls, costs for expanded storm drain infrastructure, to really understand where investments can most wisely be made to protect, or rather, identify adaptation strategies that may be more cost-effective. We have, some of our findings are listed in the document. A few of them here are that properties, properties at risk are estimated at about $275 million by the year 2060, and our evaluation suggests that only about $50 million of those dollars, $50 million in properties would be completely protected if current seawall infrastructure is replaced, maintained, et cetera. So, which was unique in our analysis with other areas, especially Santa Cruz County. This suggests that many of the, much of the infrastructure that's vulnerable in the future is vulnerable not only to coastal erosion, but also to storm flooding, which is probably not a surprise, which leads to more dynamic and strategic decisions about how best to accommodate these, these future hazards. We also identified through the fluvial analysis that future river flooding could be significant with an estimated almost eight feet of water above flood level during a catastrophic flood coming down the river, and we have identified maps of the areas that lay that out. We've also identified, a significant finding was that by 2100, if the city decides to maintain coastal protections at the location they are today, with sea level rise, much of the Capitola beach would be lost, because it would be inundated by higher seas while there's nowhere for the beach to migrate inland. And so I think that's one of the key findings from this report, that the city has a long time to understand the long-term implications of decisions, and hopefully through our analysis, be able to make strategic short-term decisions with an understanding long-term opportunities to adapt and start to invest in those long-term visions. We identify a certain number of adaptation options, short-term and long-term, focused primarily on short-term, including improved resiliency to flooding along the creek and the coastline, investing in storm drain upgrades. Initial impacts are primarily associated with coastal flooding. We identified a certain number of storm drains that may be more vulnerable along the river to higher river flooding. Many more adaptation strategies for the near term, and then some for the, into the future, as risks become more significant. Possible next steps that we identified, looking at how to incorporate some of these findings into the capital improvement project review process, to make sure that infrastructure that is, new infrastructure that's placed in these hazard zones is designed to accommodate whatever the risks are in those areas. Also investigate beach groin upgrades. One of the key protective strategies has been put in place in Capitola since the 60s, and then also look at how perhaps beach nourishment may work in combination with those groins to maintain, at least in the shorter-term timelines, maintain that beach width. And then we also look at other, many other important activities, including public outreach and discussion about options and strategies moving forward. And then I highly recommend continuing to support staff in their efforts to participate in regional discussions about climate adaptation. Rich's participation in a number of working groups has led to our ability to get these state funds, and that continued participation, I see, with state funding that's coming down to help local municipalities be adaptive, will continue with staff like Rich at the table. Any questions?
That was a great overview. That's a lot, a lot of work. Quite a scope. Any introductory questions first? Then I'll, okay, Jack.
I think a question that's often on people's minds when we're struggling with this is to try to understand the science behind the scenarios that you're using to make your projections. So if you could comment a little bit about that, you know, what's the validity? How real is this? It's often in public discussion. So that's my first question. My second question is, as the science changes, are you anticipating any better ways to look at what the future could be? I know we can't predict the future. You're creating scenarios to try to understand what it could be. So do you anticipate new developments, like the HPP, for instance, that might be better able to give us a grasp of what we can predict and what we could expect?
That's an excellent question, and the science is continuing to improve, and we're continuing to learn as we move into the future. And the one thing that I really stressed through this planning process is let's not wait until the science is perfect before we start to understand what likely future hazard areas may be, and then, and start deciding what at least short-term adaptation strategies are. The models that were used for this were based on the guidelines from the California Coastal Commission that came out a few years ago, so they're completely in agreement with state guidelines as of right now. Recent science and studies are finding that projected sea level rise may actually be greater than what we used in this study. We did include extreme conditions as one of our evaluations, but some studies are saying that that might not even be sufficient. My response to that is that sea level will be at four feet before it is at five feet. And so, and what that means is our projected sea level rise for 2100 may be, may occur if some of these new projections are correct, in 2090 or 2085. We should still be preparing for those future scenarios, even if the time horizon is less than we currently believe.
I appreciate that last comment, and it is something that we should be prepared for in this body. It's definitely very appreciative of your report, and we'll look forward to more discussion on this.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? This is a public hearing? Yes, Peter.
So, I hear you're right in saying that if, to basically armor the village with a seawall would basically eliminate the long-term, that wouldn't, that would just eliminate the beach, because the sand needs to migrate inland.
That's correct. The predicted ocean levels by 2100 meet much of the current location of the seawall, so we would lose about 90% of the beach area.
And you also mentioned the beach groins or the jetties. That wouldn't, that would only be a short-term capturing sand for short-term storm surges, but that wouldn't be the long, any kind of long-term answer? Is that correct?
It may get us into mid-century, but we, as, we need to be cognizant of the fact that the ocean in front of the beach is going to be rising if the village behind the beach is not. We have secondary interactions with groundwater, seepage, et cetera, that will provide a conduit for flooding even if we do continue to build our beaches up. So there's, there's a number of factors involved in how these different vulnerabilities play out, depending on what our adaptation strategies are. But as, yeah, but our findings were that if we hold the line, which is the term, at where our current boundaries between beach and community are, we will be jeopardizing beach over the long term. Thank you.
In view of the Coastal Commission's feelings regarding cladding of the coast, do you think that this report will change their approach in any way?
We, I've had a number of discussions with Coastal Commission staff, and I think as these, these vulnerability assessments are developed and real, on-the-ground adaptation options are evaluated, I think the Coastal Commission is seeing that coastal armoring is one of the tools in the toolbox, and the strategic, or the best approach moving forward is to identify what the different options are, and try and fit as many into a community strategy as possible.
We'll see how that works. Thank you.
What do you think about a hotel at the theater site with underground parking? Think the Coastal Commission will approve that?
I don't know.
Underground or underwater?
Underwater parking, sorry. That's what I meant. I misspoke. Any other comments? Okay, our, our task here is just to accept the report unless there's any other comments or questions, and we sure, thank you very much. I'd like to take this to the Commission on the Environment, and actually, next time I have this, come to the Commission on the Environment for review, and then come to us afterwards, so that if they have any comments they'd like us to hear, they're an advisory body, and so I'd still like to hear their comments if, after it goes to them. Yes, Jack.
Do we want to vote on, to receive the report? Or we're just receiving?
We don't need a vote, I don't believe.
Didn't know if it was required of the...
We can give you one. We're very good at that. No?
Consent. Just wanted to cover, in case we had a grant that needed a vote. That's all, thanks.
Jack?
So, to further discussion at the COE, which she anticipated my request, I was wondering if Rich could attend that meeting, because I think there's going to be a lot of zoning issues here, and I don't, Public Works too, if we're going to have to get on that discussion level too. Can, is there possibility of, okay, I see you.
I'm happy to.
Okay, yeah, I almost hesitated to ask, but I really appreciate you extending yourself to help us out, because there's a lot of technical things here, and to get the nuances out of that, what it means to Capitola, that's what we're trying to get to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is the Item C, Section 8 Landlord Incentive Program.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. In 2015, the city of Capitola participated in a county-wide homeless strategic plan, which developed a number of action items, one of them being to develop a landlord outreach and incentive program to increase Section 8 participation amongst landlords. Following the adoption of the stra- Following the adoption of the strategic plan, there were several stakeholder meetings convened by the Housing Authority, and there was a number of nonprofits and agency members that were involved to help develop what that incentive program would look like. That program is before you this evening, and we are asking for a funding commitment from you and other partner agencies to help the incentive program so they can launch sometime next year. The goal of the program is to encourage more landlords to accept Section 8 voucher holders, with the idea being that more participating landlords would result in more low-income families being assisted with their housing needs. The program would provide insurance to landlords in Section 8 program through a risk mitigation fund. The mitigation fund would cover up to $2,500 for unpaid rent, damages, vacancy loss, and/or any legal fees that exceed the security deposit during the first year of tenancy. And the program would be offered to any landlord in Santa Cruz County that participates in the voucher program. The ask tonight is for Capitola to contribute $4,040. That would represent the maximum financial cost to the City of Capitola in any given year. The funds would only be used if an eligible claim is filed within the city limits, and claims are always subject to fund availability. The city does have adequate funds available in its housing successor funds to make the contribution. So staff recommends that you authorize the city manager to allocate the funds out of the housing successor fund for the Section 8 landlord incentive program. And with that, I would like to introduce Jenny Panetta, who's the Executive Director of the County of Santa Cruz Housing Authority. Jenny's recent appointment in that position, I believe she was appointed in May after a long-term of service with the Housing Authority. I know she's also, I think, a Santa Cruz native and is with a school at UCSC. And so I welcome Jenny, and thank you for being here.
Welcome, and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Harlan, and members of the council. My name is Jenny Panetta. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. As Rich mentioned, I'm fairly new to the position, but I've been with the agency for 15 years, and I absolutely love the work. We are particularly excited about the landlord incentive program because we think that in this rental market, the best way that we can help our families is to better assist our landlords. And ultimately, if the Section 8 program doesn't work for landlords, then it doesn't work, period. So we are excited to work with you on this if we get the opportunity to do so, as well as any other future opportunities for partnership and collaboration with the City of Capitola. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the program.
Yeah, Jack?
I have a question. This basically is money we're putting into fund for the whole county, correct?
It's not going to go into a shared pot.
Okay, that's what --
So essentially, each jurisdiction that contributes funds, those funds will be set aside and would be available only if there was an eligible claim for a unit that was within the City of Capitola.
Okay, got it.
So we're keeping all the funds separate.
Okay, thanks.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to ask a question or speak on this item? Then I'll bring it back to the council. Other questions?
I'll move to recommended action. Second?
Questions?
Yeah, I do have one.
Comments?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, okay. So I do hear a lot of complaints about how short the period of time is for eligibility. It takes a long time to get on the program, and it's very hard to find a location, a landlord. So this is going to help in that regard, but is there any possibility that this period could be extended so when a person is looking for a place, they could actually find one?
Yes, and we have been doing so. HUD requires that we give voucher holders at least 60 days in which to find a unit. Typically, in a normal rental market, we were giving 60 days and then one additional 60-day extension. Lately, we have been giving a minimum of nine months for voucher holders to search for a unit, and we will give additional time on top of that for individuals with disabilities.
Okay.
How many Section 8 voucher apartments and homes do we have in Santa Cruz County?
In Santa Cruz County, we have about 4,500 low-income households that we're assisting through the program, and about 200 of those households are receiving assistance here in the City of Capitola. So it's about 4.5% of our program.
And what kind of waiting list do you have?
The waiting list, my goodness. The waiting list is about 3,000 families. And keep in mind, that waiting list has been closed since July of 2011. So it's been closed for, you know, seven years, and we still have 3,000 families that are waiting for assistance. We are actively working through our waiting list. We're issuing about 100 vouchers a month, and a year ago, our waiting list was about 10,000. So you can see we're progressing through the waiting list very rapidly at this time. We hope to be able to open the waiting list in the coming year. There's a tremendous amount of need.
I know. The need out there is beyond belief.
4,500 vouchers, it sounds like a lot. It sounds like a lot of families that are being assisted, and it is, but it only scratches the surface of the need that's out there. We estimate that about 30,000 families in Santa Cruz County are income-eligible for the low-income program. They're below 80% of median income. So we have enough assistance to serve about 15% of the need in the county, hence the very long list for wait for assistance.
How will landlords be made aware of this program?
We're going to be actively promoting it. In fact, in a couple of weeks, the county will be celebrating Affordable Housing Week with a number of affordable housing-themed activities. One of those activities, one of those events, will be a celebration of the All-In Landlord Partnership, which represents a number of different government organizations, service providers, the housing authorities, et cetera. And we're going to announce a couple of programs at that event in a couple of weeks. This program is one of them. We'll also be reaching out to landlords and property management companies to let them know about the program, and we will be promoting the program, you know, to our voucher holders as well, so that when they're out there looking for a unit and they're talking to landlords, they can use this program to help sell themselves to the landlords.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have this program before us tonight, and we're being asked to approve this, the funds?
There's a motion and a second.
All in -- any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Last item is the subdivision ordinance cleanup. And Rich, my question is, before we start, the -- all of the -- all of the text that's in the numbers that are so light you can't read it are -- that's being deleted? Those shaded things are being deleted and are being changed or deleted? All of the really light?
No, that's just in blue. The blue is coming up as light, like that, see? The ordinance numbers are in blue.
Okay, so that's new?
No, that's existing.
No, the changes should be represented in strikeout underlined, so it's underlined, it's new. If it struck out, it's being deleted.
Right, but was it old or new?
It's blue. It's existing. It's new and old. It's not changing.
And why is it in blue? Just -- I was just --
It's in blue because it's a -- it's an active link on our ordinance.
That's right.
Put your mouse over it if you have it up on the computer.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't look at it online. I looked at it just here where the -- it looked like it was --
Sorry to me to jump in on your --
No, thank you for the help.
That's great.
I wasn't -- I wasn't sure.
Okay, sorry. Okay, introduction, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. The last item is the subdivision ordinance cleanup. The city subdivision ordinance was last updated in 1980, so like many of our codes and regulations, it's in need of an update. The intervening 37 years, there's been significant regulatory and physical changes. The California Subdivision Map Act has been revised a number of times, as well as the City of Capitola has revised our land use regulations extensively during that time. And we've also been nearly built out since the early 1980s. This amendment is really focused on relatively minor cleanup items. We included a couple of new definitions and a couple of revisions. It clarifies that the Planning Commission is the decision-maker for minor subdivisions because there was some inconsistency in the ordinance. It revised the time limit for applicants to record maps so that it's now consistent with the Subdivision Map Act. It changed the authority to approve new street names to the building official, which is a longstanding city practice. And the two more notable changes that we have for you this evening is we did introduce a new lot design exception process for unusually shaped parcels, so that the council or Planning Commission would have the authority to make exceptions. And then we included new standards and procedures for lot line adjustments because they were lacking in the city's current ordinance. So in terms of the lot design exception process, as I mentioned, the current ordinance does not allow either the Planning Commission or the council to approve subdivision maps which have any deviation from lot design standards. In my experience, this is unusual. Lot design, depending on the underlying geometry, is often very difficult to meet -- make strict enforcement to design guidelines, and most agencies do have some type of exception process. Oftentimes, lots do have physical conditions which prevent the strict enforcement, and this exception would allow an exception to design standards if topographic or geometric conditions prevented full compliance. A couple of examples, just so you can understand what we're looking at. You might remember the subdivision on 410 Bay Avenue, a little bit down the road from Gales. It's a triangle-shaped lot, and it resulted in kind of a funny panhandle lot that's outlined here in blue. Under the subdivision design standards, this lot could never have been created. It has a driveway rather than the front part of the lot fronting a public street, and the lot width, because of its triangle shape, is not 50 feet across as suggested by the ordinance. Another recent subdivision was the 38th Avenue project. It was 11 units. This is another one that, under strict compliance with design standards, could not have been approved because all the lots were fronting a private road. The ordinance currently requires it to be facing on a public street, and the frontage was substandard from the zoning ordinance requirements. The standards for lot line adjustments are simply added so that there are some standards and procedures in our codes because they were completely lacking. The standards would codify largely existing practices. The Community Development Director has been the decision-making authority for lot line adjustments. That would remain the same. We've outlined appeal standards and procedures to be consistent with other discretionary permits in the city. We've given the -- or added a time limit of one year for applicants to record a lot line adjustment. They would be eligible to receive a one-year extension upon application. And then we added some lot line location standards so that lot lines are not relocated to impair legal access or easements, do not include any lots which were never intended as building sites, or which would create an undersized lot or exacerbate an existing nonconformity, whether it be lot size or setbacks. And the findings to approve a lot line adjustment would simply be to comply with the general plan zoning code, local coastal program, and the California Map Act. And so staffs recommended the council introduce the proposed ordinance this evening and schedule a second reading for October 26th. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Mike?
I'll ask if this has been passed by our city attorney, and would this -- would these changes clean up the inconsistencies that we were confronted in with a legal challenge recently?
Yeah, we did work with the city attorney's office, particularly after that legal challenge, and it was evident that a design exception process is really needed so that we get these unusual circumstances as a way for the decision-maker to handle a project that might meet the intent but not the strict letter of design standards.
Wonderful, thank you.
Speaking of 38th Avenue, everybody should go over there and take a look at that project. I'm not happy with it. I think it's too dense. There's not enough space between the units, and I think it's too crowded, and it's, you know, it is high density, and that's -- there's something to say for it, but take a look at it and see if you think that it's a place you'd like to live and you think that it fits into Capitola.
Like it better than the battleship that we approved that went there.
Well, yeah, that's true, but I, you know, I think we, you know, just take a look at it and see what you think, because as we're going to be talking about high-density stuff, that's an example of, you know, some high-density that may work, may not, depending on what you think about it.
I did go by yesterday and looked at it. I was a little surprised at how it turned out myself, as a matter of fact.
So on this matter, are there any questions about any of the cleanup language? It's all pretty much just housekeeping stuff, you know? Jack?
Yeah, I did have a question, Rich, and, you know, I came in this afternoon to talk to you about timeline. You know, when someone is being faced with a change to a particular status and they might have to move out. So I've talked to a few people since then, and I -- my sense is that the process will give adequate warning and adequate time for people to adjust their life as that process moves forward. Does that seem to be consistent with your understanding of this code if it's adopted?
So I think you're referring to the condo conversion division within that chapter. It's something that we have not proposed any changes to. It's my understanding that there is a notification requirement which the city council in the past has determined to be appropriate. It's a section of the ordinance that probably should be reworked sometime in the future. It hasn't been a priority of the city in the past, but, you know, it's something we could look at down the road.
Okay, yeah, I'd appreciate that because my concern here is for residents of Capitola so they have actual time to respond to these changes in their life. Thank you.
Crest Apartments? I mean, they've already gone -- they've already gone through part of that step of forming a residents' association or something like that.
So they and the Antigua have a tenant-in-common arrangement, which is not quite a condominium. It's something that the city has no oversight or regulatory authority over. I don't know if the entire building has been converted tenant-in-common or if they're just a few units, because there is no oversight. We don't get that information.
Other questions about this? This is a public hearing, and would anyone like to speak about this? Then I'll bring it back to the council. Any other questions or discussion? Good evening. Thank you for waiting.
I'm sure you didn't expect anybody from the public.
Oh, yes, we always love to have people come and speak.
Let me sign in here.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Peter Taylor. I'm a 30-year resident of Capitola, and this matter is actually potentially going to impact me. I don't know if the legal letter that was referred to earlier was the one from my attorneys, but my name is Peter Taylor. I'm with -- I retained Parkin to represent me in a situation where the property next door was being subdivided. Your current regulation requires that a minimum lot size is 5,100 feet, square feet, that it's 100 feet deep and 50 feet wide. The property that they proposed to subdivide next to me was actually 50 feet deep and 100 foot wide, and it didn't front Wolf Road. It actually fronted my driveway. So I guess the question I've got here is, are these changes going to allow -- and that lot would have been illegal because it didn't front a 20-foot-wide public street. If you go read your old rules, the definition of front was the street, so the depth back from Wolf Road was what defined depth, and that wasn't 100 feet, so it didn't meet that requirement. I'm afraid that by -- and the real issue, if you went and looked at the situation, is that I don't believe the developer wants to put in his own driveway, so he's using my driveway where he has an easement. It's already gone from a duplex to a triplex, and if they put this house, it's going to be now effectively four households sharing a one-lane driveway. And in the proposal that was put forth to the Planning Commission, they compared it to two other situations where people share driveways. I came in here and explained to everybody that I don't know how you compare apples and oranges and call that a comparison. A two-way street being compared to a one-lane driveway, to me, is not a comparison. I mean, they're just not the same safety aspects involved at all. In fact, coming here today, I nearly had a run-in with the people using the tenants who use that driveway. I mean, it's dangerous. And so I'm here to say that, yeah, I don't have a problem with the planning department having the right to define what's a legal lot, but I think they have to apply a follow-through on your own rules. And if the rules still require width being 100, then I think that should be enforced, that it shouldn't be able to flip-flop width and depth and say, oh, I've still got a 5,100 square foot lot, but if the orientation isn't on the street, then you're not in compliance. It's not 100 foot deep. It's only 50 foot deep. So I would argue that if this is going to give the city the, I mean, the city planning department the ability to make this type of change, I would strongly ask you to deny that request. I've lived here for 30 years. I need some protection from this developer. I understand the city wants to, you know, develop as much of the property in the city as possible. as possible, but he can put in a driveway, have the right orientation, have the right depth, and not burden me with the traffic. It really is not, it's not safe, and I don't know how anybody in good judgment could go and look at that situation and say, a one-lane driveway can handle five households of traffic. I mean, it's, it's crazy, and I appreciate your time.
Wasn't that project approved by the Planning Commission?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you know, that--
No, no, no. But let me tell you what happened. You were going to schedule when you were going to hear our appeal, and two days before you were going to put that on your agenda, the project was pulled. Nobody's explained to me why he pulled the project off. It had been approved by the Planning Commission, but they pulled it before it got to you.
And wasn't your appeal pulled also?
No. You charged me 200. I paid the $500 to appeal it. They pulled the appeal, and you still kept 250 of my dollars. And I've already spent over $10,000 defending ourselves in this situation, and I'm afraid that by pulling it, they're just going to wait for you guys to change the rules, then they're going to come back and drop it on your desk again. And I'm going to be back with a lawyer spending another $15,000, $20,000 when I could be using that money to help my kid go through business school. So, I've come down here because this really impacts me big time, and I really don't want the Planning Commission to have the ability to play games with your rules. Your rules make sense. You've got to have planning departments to make sure we don't have a total mishmash out here. Their work is well-appreciated by most people, and I appreciate them, but I don't want them to have the ability to take what is really not a developable lot unless you put in his own driveway, his own street, so that the orientation is to a street and not piggyback my driveway and stick me with all this traffic.
So, you have an old easement from an old, old agreement?
I bought, the situation was a guy owned that lot. He bought the lot next, next to him and the lot next to that. He subdivided those two lots. I'm one of them, but he still used my driveway, effectively my driveway.
You know what? Call me tomorrow because I'd love to talk to you about this.
Anyway, just--
Thank you very much.
Please, I appreciate your understanding--
Thank you very much.
--and I appreciate listening to me.
Thank you very much. Call, call City Hall tomorrow and leave your name and phone number, and I'll call you back.
Thank you.
You have any information you want to give us about that, or just?
I can just confirm that there was an application, and the Planning Commission approved it. It was appealed. The applicant withdrew their application, and there's no longer an active application at that address.
Did he appeal it?
Excuse me?
Did that gentleman--
No, the applicant pulled it. That gentleman was the opponent.
Right, he appealed it?
Yes.
Right.
Point of order. It just, I mean, we're talking about a subdivision development. This item isn't before us to discuss. I don't know that we should be discussing this item. I'm looking at a, at a, at a cleanup on a subdivision map. I'm thinking we should vote on that.
We should. I just wanted to get that straightened in, in case there was anything left on that item.
That has to come back, and that's a whole different. I, I'm thinking we're here to talking about a subdivision cleanup.
Right, right. I didn't, don't know whether it's coming back or not because where does it stand?
Well--
The applicant, the applicant withdrew their application.
That's right.
Okay, so that doesn't have any effect on this?
It doesn't currently. It would provide a design exception theoretically that may assist the applicant, but I would point out that I think the issues are not about the geometry of the lot, but as the